It started, everybody's met Henry Delosier. I met Henry, if you want to say it that way. I saw Henry about six years ago. He was speaking in Orlando at a club manager's conference. And he definitely caught my attention when he started out his presentation with a beautiful picture of a golf course, a lot like the picture of ours on the website. And he said, "You see this beautiful picture? It's not selling you any houses. You see all this water around the green? Eighty percent of the people who buy your house, decision is made by women, and they look at that picture as being too difficult. So while it's beautiful, it's not moving your mission forward if your mission is developing your community." So that really caught my attention because when you see everybody's signature hole, and it's Florida, it's always water, it's always difficult. So that really caught my attention, and obviously, he made a great presentation. I had an opportunity to see him again, and he impressed me more. And so that's why you're here, Henry. Basically, you're the most knowledgeable person I've ever personally been able to hear talk about developing communities and developing golf and strategic planning and wrapping it all into one. So Henry's, really, his bio is probably 10 pages long to just make it very simple. To me, he's the largest developer of communities personally in the country, working for Dell Web and Pulte Homes. And from my observation, he's a very smart man. So he's learned a lot, been around a lot of smart people. I think that's one of the keys. The more smart people you're around, the more you can learn. So really, without any more further ado, Henry Delosier.
Thank you, Jim.
Henry, I've got to start the meeting. So we'll call the meeting open. We want to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I think the flag is over there. Or let's guess that it's over there.
Good enough. That's good.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under power, individual, with liberty and justice for
The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, May 12th, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center in Sebring, Florida. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Okay, Henry, you can start.
It's great to get to be here with all of you, and great to have gotten to meet you a little bit so I could feel like I'm talking to a group of friends. Jim, thank you for inviting me. Thanks for your generous description of our acquaintance. For those of you who are interested, I've actually prepared a PowerPoint to kind of serve as a guide for our discussion, but we should not be wed to that at all. We should let the conversation go wherever you would like it to go. I've tried to do my homework and come a little bit prepared. And in fact, I'll take you on the PowerPoint to put together a little bit of a discussion outline to help me stay on track. But if this is an outline that looks comfortable for you, I'll just try to steer our conversation through there as we go. And as I said before, I sure hope you feel welcome to deviate from that if you choose to do so. The big thing for me, whenever I'm trying to actually get a sense of what a community is and what it should be, is to put forward a handful of questions. Before doing so, however, I thought introductions may be in order. We've all had a chance to meet. Is there anything that you normally do when you introduce yourselves or describe the club to friends? Just the normal things that you did with me? Okay? Good. That's an insightful point of branding for me. And one of the most formative experiences in my career was having the opportunity to be working for Dell Web Corporation at the time that it was acquired by Pulte Homes. The two public companies, can you imagine? Pulte Homes paid $1.8 billion for Dell Web and closed that deal 14 days before 9/11. It was a culture clash that became a culture blend because of terrific leadership. Mr. Pulte, a number of key people that were a part of each company made the strengths of the two companies come to bear and diminished the weaknesses of each company. Webb was not a darling of Wall Street because it did not get a good yield on invested capital. And at the same time, Pulte, which was masterful at financial management, did a poor job of projecting its brand, its image, and was simply a builder and seller of homes. And it was always fun, in that time, in communities like this one, to sit, you know, having a ringside seat, to hear executives in each company expressing their viewpoint. And the viewpoint was, at Pulte, was we build and sell homes. That's what we do. We're home builders. And to hear the Dell Web executives saying, "Well, no, actually, the people who are buying homes from us already have a home. They want to buy a lifestyle." So you can see in that process that if you come to Sebring, Florida, you can get a place to stay in any number of places. But what people are looking for in Sebring, at the villages, up and down the north and south of Florida, is they're looking for a lifestyle that is one that they've worked hard to earn, to have the opportunity to get access to. So having that opportunity, having that ringside seat, gave me an exposure to a broader sense of perspective. And that perspective caused me to understand that there must be financial efficiency, and that's where you see the best communities like yours prospering, is they have a robust and very well-knit financial plan. While at the same time, understanding that the value proposition has nothing to do with financials, it's entirely about how people live their lives in the best years of their lives. They've had enough success and achievement in their careers to be able to afford to be in Florida for the wintertime. They've raised children, they've lived their lives, they've developed a tremendous amount of wisdom, of understanding. So this is a market of people who have a lifetime of knowledge. The other thing that is an interesting characteristic about communities like yours is that most people spend a lot of time deciding to make a purchase. Did you know that? Normal people in normal home communities, you pretty much have to buy a house before school starts because you've got to get people situated. In communities like this, nobody's in a rush. You can just go and rent a place for the winter if you choose to do so. So as a result, the people who buy homes in communities like this are extremely deliberate. They may visit, they may look things over 10, 12 times before they actually make a buy decision. And by the way, Jim touched on an interesting fact of life, and that is, your customer, the future buyer of property here, is a female. Ninety-one percent of home purchase decisions are made by a woman. Even in same-sex couples, the person who makes the decision is the person who has kind of the feminine role in that relationship. So when it comes to nesting, that's the person who makes the decision. Now, I know what all of you guys are thinking, and that is, "Well, I want to meet the one guy out of 10."
Spoke up.
Who said, "Well, I don't give a damn if you like the house or not, that's what I bought." Because, you know, that's either a guy who's got an incredibly understanding wife, or he doesn't hear very well.
And he has a piece of property in the cemetery, too.
Or he's planning to live there by himself. But, you know, if you really think about it, here we are at NBA playoffs. If you get 91% of your free throws, you lead the league in free throw shooting. So 91% is an enormous number. The one thing that everyone in this community has, whether they're a golfer or couldn't care less about the club, the one thing that everyone has in common is property value. And no one wants to see their property value diminished in one of the last big investments that they're going to make in their lives. So it becomes important, it becomes incumbent upon your district leaders, for those of you who are servant leaders, it becomes incumbent upon you to retain focus all the time on property value. So by way of kind of introduction, that's where I think I'm wanting to take our conversation, if that's okay with everyone. And by the way, I'll be happy to carry the burden, but as far as I'm concerned, I consider this to be a conversation. So feel welcome to stop me, challenge me, disagree with me. I'm perfectly comfortable with that. I prepared a handful of questions that are always a starting point for me when I start trying to understand a club and a community like yours. Of course, the big one is, what are your strategic priorities? When you are collecting as a board, and, you know, if you work on the theory that essentially a board is responsible for three things, one is safeguarding the assets of the corporation; number two is developing sound and effective strategy; and number three is managing and monitoring the financial characteristics of the entity. Those are the big three. You can throw governance in there behind that if you want to. To me, governance is woven through all of those things. But if you think about that, then the question is, how do you develop strategy? Of course, in getting acquainted with a number of you and coming to understand a little bit about the, I call them constraints, under which you work, it's pretty tough to develop strategy when it all has to be done in a public meeting. So how do you develop strategy? Or is it fair to say, you kind of sort of let strategy make it, create itself? My instinct is, if you're like a lot of communities that I have seen of this type, either someone else developed the strategy for you, and you, as servant leaders, reviewed it, evaluated it, made it more effective, refined it, and then implemented. Or you take the strategy that was in place by the original developer and try to perpetuate that as a legacy. And that becomes very difficult, especially when times change so dramatically. You know, think about it. In getting acquainted with you and reading your bios, it looks to me like all of you have been involved here through the greatest housing boom in the history of the planet. And you've also ridden through the worst economic decline since the Great Depression. You know, if nothing else, we all should be a lot smarter from that experience. So as you think about what you're doing, do you have strategy? How do you formulate strategy?
I think we have some, myself have outside entities that help us, guide us, what we need to do. In other words, I've talked to you about the population here and the number of members and what's declining, and that in itself lends us to be in a meeting like this.
Right.
It's those outside pressures that tell me what I think we ought to do, or something needs to be done, now what are we going to do?
Right.
And we have room for expansion, we're lucky for that. I mean, I'm just not talking about land and property, I'm talking about the size of membership. We're in ourselves right in the middle of it, now expanding this area. So I think we have room for everything we need to do, it's just to get that person in here.
Right.
Get her in here.
Right. And that means, at a certain point, that becomes a numbers game. We always worked on the theory that we were going to have about a 10% success ratio off of recognized leads. So if you have an annual turnover of 100 units, then that means you've got to have 1,000 people out there somewhere that are thinking, "Yeah, Sun and Lake, that would be perfect for us." And that means you've got to be constantly filling the pipeline of people who are interested in finding this location. And lacking those 1,000 people, then everyone is scrambling. Lacking those 1,000 people, then your property value is constantly teetering on growing or failing. And that's something that I think as servant leaders, you want to be alert to. Jimmy, you're holding your microphone.
Yeah. Well, being, I've been here 20 months, and I think that our, at least to me, our strategies are individual because you talk about the challenges of the sunshine laws. But I kind of believe they're unspoken but universal. So at least from all of my interface with every board member there, directly aware that developing the community, you know, selling out the community since we're, let's say, 60% sold out for a number, is a priority for the health of the community. And creating a quality of life for the people that are here is really the driving priority through, you know, through our amenities and through our programming. But it's not formalized, but I feel like every decision we make is guided by those. And so we have a mission and vision statement, to me, that is more governmental, you know, because we are a government entity.
Sure.
But I believe what we live is more of a people statement of, you know, being, I mean, this is a God, family, and country town, it's a God, family, and country club. You know, a lot of Midwest people that are great people, but, you know, there's a genuine concern, I'm sure there is everywhere, but here in this community, more for everybody to develop, you know, a really good quality of life. And then just, in a lot of ways, we focus on that and then drive it through, I think, our biggest amenity here, which is, you know, the golf club and the community center.
Right. And my experience in communities like this is somewhere there was an originator, developer, someone, somewhere, said, "We should develop a master-planned community targeted to active adults and build a golf course in the middle of it as a centralizing amenity and sell the property." And there was a clear-cut plan, there was an intent, it was a for-profit motive. And driving that for-profit motive was strategy. After the community lives its life cycle, the strategy becomes stale. But the developer has sold out and wishes to move on. Several of us were talking about our upbringings on family farms. And, you know, farmers are people who intend to be there for their whole lives. It's a very long-term relationship with the land. Developers are the polar opposite. Their relationship with the land is very short-term, it's very transactional. I buy it, I develop it, I sell it piece by piece, and I make huge profits. Jim was telling you about seeing me in a golf conference or a club manager conference, and one of the things that I would run into in the time when golf courses became so oversupplied was people would approach me and say, "You guys are building five more golf courses this year. What in the world are you thinking? There are too many golf courses already. Why do you do that?" And I, you know, would explain to them, "We're a home-building company, and the math is really quite easy. We're going to spend about $10 million to develop a golf course with 1,000, 2,000, 3,000 homes around it. We're going to make $30 or $40 million off of the property premiums that we earn around the golf course. So how could we not build a golf course? That would be a disservice to our shareholders. And PS, all of our golf courses are full." The catch is, we understand how to price our golf so that people want to play it rather than saying it costs too much and having to drive down the road.
I think that's part of our problem here, is that developer has moved on, he's made his money, he's moved on. Now we're a government entity trying to run a community that there is very little benefit for us to go out and promote the building part of the community as far as selling lots or whatever, because the financial benefit is we make $700 a year. And there's, and plus, the government side of this, the district side of this, is focused on taking care of what we have and not focused on promoting where we want to go. And to me, that's our biggest challenge, is to get back in the developer mindset to move this community forward.
Sure. And Kurt, that's a really good insight. The challenge is now that the developer is gone and there are people who are relying upon the district to govern and lead, it means you have to blend both sets of needs. The entrepreneurial behavior that drives growth, while at the same time, the preservationist approach, which is how you govern. So for me, that's an important characteristic. The reason I ask this question about how you replace the developer's reach is because in my experience, most communities don't. And they begin, they begin a progression of dying in place. And that's a very dangerous proposition. It's not good for the long-term needs of the community because we, as we think about communities of this type, we're only passing through. We're only caretakers of this magnificent place you have. But we'll buy, we'll enjoy, we'll sell, and then someone else will come along. You know, most of us are motivated in one way or another by wanting to feel that we can take the property that we bought and sell it for a higher price, just if for no reason other than personal satisfaction. So there should be a plan that goes with that. Because of the restrictions you have as essentially a governmental entity, then you have to develop that strategy, and it may be that you have to develop that strategy independently. And that may be one of your solutions. I believe you issue RFPs, I believe that you conduct the processes that make it possible for you to identify people who can help you develop those kinds of plans. And I suggest to you that that should be one of the things that you, as a board, undertake, figuring out how do we do this so that we do have a plan going forward. The fact that you have a plan also helps you to manage the sunshine process. Because at least when you're only able to get together in this public setting, at least you have a magnetic north to which everyone can draw. And I think that becomes a really important characteristic. Jim was touring me around the clubhouse earlier and was saying that we had a game plan for what we wanted to do with the kitchen, then the board changed, and the viewpoints and expectations of the new board were different than the previous. And that is one of the characteristics of club communities that get in trouble, and that is because they're constantly whip-sawing back and forth from which plan are we using on a given day. And, you know, good, bad, or ugly, any plan is almost better than no plan. So that becomes a real, and of course, that's a very broad generalization, but I know you follow my point. The other question that I wanted to put out there is this issue of value proposition. What is it that makes people want to buy and live here? I mean, I'm assuming it's the Florida sunshine.
Well, I think it's that, and also the cost of living here. We're what I call a blue-collar community. You know, all of us were, worked in a factory, or we had sales jobs, or whatever, but, for example, reunion or celebration is not our customer, you know. And so, I lost my train of thought. So there you go.
Sure. And while, and while that profile may be changing for the 30-somethings and the 40-somethings, you know, we read that the middle class is shrinking, you know, but at the same time, the fact of the matter is there are a lot more people who fit the profile that you just described, Kurt, than there are people who fit that profile for reunion or one of the other communities you mentioned.
I think that, to cover what he said, carried on, is how I got here is pretty typical of what, how people get here. A friend owned a place, I was coming down in the winters for a month or two when I was working or employed. And the place sold itself to me. And I went up and down the east coast, west coast, I couldn't afford those places, I couldn't afford a million-dollar home, $72,000 a year to play golf. But we had pretty good golf courses here, and I rented, like a lot of people here did. And then I bought a condo, like a lot of people here did, I sold a condo, bought a house, and so invested in the community. But it was that tier of how it works, because I talked to friends, most of them, that's how they did. Someone got them here, and they rented, and then they started buying. But it's word of mouth. As I look at this board, all of us, I think, are here because someone invited us here. And, I mean, I didn't pick up anything to read about Sun and Lake, and I studied Golf Digest, I studied all the things to find the places to go, and spent five years doing it. And ended up right here. Because of what Kurt's saying, it was very affordable, and it's great, everything about it was great, getting better, we thought.
Did all of you have the same sort of experience?
Yes. I think all of us, when I think of it, we all came here through somebody. And that's why sometimes we struggle with all the stuff we're doing, trying to attract people. And the big thing is that we seem to, I think, think works is getting, just getting people here. And that's what I'm looking for, for, it's, I think, whether it's you or one of my, one of our friends, to get them here. If we get them here, I think we can get a majority of them.
Sure.
But it's just getting them here to experience it.
And having a plan that's organized. The fact is, people, it's easier to invite people to come visit you if there's something that you're going to do when they get here. If we're, if all of us sitting here were developers, we would be planning every three weeks, every two weeks, some sort of party, some sort of event, some sort of activity. So now, the people in the community can be contacting, calling, emailing their friends up, Nora's saying, "You've got to come down and visit us, and, you know, tell me if you can come down in February or March, because we have a party every, you know, every few days." And it's, this is the funnest thing you ever saw. Then people say, "Yeah, sure, we're going to, we're going to go somewhere, we'll stop by and visit you." And then you let nature take its course. Kurt?
Just resting.
Okay.
But one point that, to support what everybody else is saying, we have a new member meeting in February, I think it is, and all of the supervisors attend that, and we have like little roundtables where we discuss different features of the community and whatever. But I always try to make a point to ask every person there, "Why are you here?" And everybody says 99% of the time, "Somebody invited me, my mother used to live here 30 years ago, and when I was a kid, we'd come down here." It's never, "I saw your ad," or, you know, "Sebring is the destination," you know, it's none of that. It's always family-related or friendship-related kind of.
That becomes the most vital, that becomes the most vital marketing tool you have, but it also has to be activated and sustained. If you went around and knocked on doors and said, "Do you have friends that you could invite to come down to Sun and Lake?", most people would say, "Oh, yeah, absolutely." But then if you said, "So when was the last time one of your friends came to visit?", a lot of people don't, are not engaged. And that becomes an important thing that you have to, that you have to deal with. While your anecdote made me think of one other factoid that I think would be useful to you. You were saying we rented for a little while, then we bought a condo, then we, that most, when I told you earlier that most people are very deliberate shoppers when they're deciding on a community like this, they, the reason, one of the main reasons for their deliberation is that they think they're buying the last home they're ever going to buy. So this has got to be right. You know, we don't have money to just throw around, so we've got to get this right. And what I can tell you as a, having worked for America's largest home builder and now serving all of the publicly traded home-building companies, what I can tell you is that the typical transaction profile in a community like this is they're going to buy 3.2 more homes. You get in, and like you said, you get in, "Well, the condo's nice, but, you know, this is perfect for us." We, in fact, with Florida's tax profile the way it is, we should just live here as our official residence, and then reverse that relationship. So if we're going to live here, then let's get a bigger place than the condo. Then after you get into the new place, and you see someone else's home that you really like come available, or the developer introduces- like come available, or the developer introduces a new home model, and you say, well, well, let's move over here or there. That's the way it happens.
He just told my life story right there. It's exactly how it happened with us.
And that's.
We were going to go to Fairfield Blades in Tennessee. That was gonna be our big home from Wisconsin. And we already owned a condo down here. So same thinking is, well, we're gonna spend more time in Florida than we are in Tennessee, so let's get the home down here and the condo up there and on and on. And my wife's talking about another house right now, so you're right.
And you know what you're gonna do, don't you?
Hopefully, I've kinda got her talked out of it right now.
Whatever.
I think you offered more different.
I was gonna say, you're.
Ninety-one percent.
You're, you're gonna do whatever she says you're gonna do.
Yeah. Well, she's not real strong on it, so I think I'm gonna get away with it.
You know, one thing, and a couple of other little factoids that I think will be useful to you. Typically, we'll tell clients that you need to set aside two to three percent of your annual gross revenues for marketing or promotional purposes. So if, if we're Del Webb, that's what we're doing. If we're villages, we're probably putting aside more than that. And at the same time, if you look at communities that have gone silent for a period of years, five, ten years, then that number needs to be closer to three to five percent of the annual gross so that you can get yourself back out there. Wally made an interesting mention of Golf Digest or Golf Magazine. And one of the things I want to emphasize for all of you is that used to be the way we in the development community contacted people. Now, the most powerful means and the most cost-effective is using the internet. And ironically, the women in our lives are the most efficient users of that because they're communicating with their friends, family, girlfriends on Facebook. So you can do a tremendous amount of communication at virtually no cost. The cost is the sweat equity of the people in this community who are pushing out key message points.
Actually, we're doing that right now and Taneele's not here, but she's doing a pretty good job. I guess my question to you would be is, how do we get the email addresses or the, how do we get connected? I had a meeting when I was in the board previously with a company up in northern Florida here that actually, that's what he does. That's his marketing expertise. And he proclaimed that he had a half a million email addresses that he could segment by, if you wanted to advertise in Canada, if you wanted to advertise in Wisconsin. And we decided not to do that. But how do we build our customer base, I guess would be the right word for it or not, but how, how do we build that internet, Facebook whole thing?
It's a campaign and it, it runs on the backs of the people who live here. So it has to be an organized process. It sounds like the person you know up in North Florida is an expert at executing, but the first call, the first point is calling everyone in this community to action. That's where you start, you're, you're going to get their email addresses first and get them engaged. And you're gonna start providing them content that they can push out to their, to their friends. And, and that, that process has to be a part of a bigger process. And the other thing, that last question that I posed on the screen is about your, how you describe your brand. One of the important decisions that has to be made at a strategic standpoint is what will be the brand messages? So that when you're calling everyone to action and saying, tell your friends to come down and visit us, you know, at, at Sun and Lake, how do you want to be describing yourselves? Because there's a lot of careful thought, if you're a developer, that goes into that so that your messages are consistent. You, for example, you want your message to be, you should look at this place, it's a tremendous value. But you do not want your message to be, you should be looking at this place, it's the cheapest place in Florida.
No, no.
Because that's not, those are not the people you want to have be your neighbor. And at the same time, there are certain key things that will help you to, to make a greater presence. Most women who would be prospective buyers of property in this area are very efficient shoppers on the internet. And so becoming and maximizing your search engine optimization, very important. The, you know, the joke that I hear the, the young people in our office make is that the best place to hide a dead body is on the second page of Google. Because nobody ever looks there.
Right.
If you don't pop up on the first page, you're not, you don't exist. And so maximizing or optimizing your search engine becomes really important. And as you, as you consider that, then I think you have to consider developing a master plan, a macro strategy of how you're going to do things. Jim, did you have a question before I move on?
No, I just, I think it's common to communities like this and I, I should have the metrics which we'll, we'll pull out of our membership. But what I believe's happened here, and I could get the feel of the board, they would have a better feel for this, is that the community, our membership is heavily weighted towards over, over seventy or over seventy-five, the, the time. So in other words, the, the numbers, the percentages I hear that when you're at a club and you're a membership director, you focus on your new members. Because they bring in seventy-five percent of your new members because they're of the right age, you know, just coming down from up north, you know, they have all the right contacts. My concern that makes our difficulty, I don't think unique, but more difficult is I think we have, you know, let's say, two-thirds or three-quarters of our membership that's been down here so long and, you know, so disconnected from up north that their reach is very minimal. So now we need to figure out how to, and when I look at the table, the table is more of our new members, you know, who are part of that reach. But then, you know, how do we figure out how to extend that reach, which I think is why we're here or, I mean, that's how I started with you with the stay-in play, which I know we'll talk about down the road, but that's the way in my mind to jumpstart that, that reach.
Right. It's the zeal of converts. You know, it's your newcomers that will recruit their friends. I'm thinking of a gentleman that I met out at a club in LA and we were talking about this same, you know, the members have to recruit the people who will be the future members. So, you know, you've gotta be looking at your friends and business associates. And he said, a little bit frustrated, he said, I'm seventy-three years old. Every friend I have in the world is either a member of this club or they're dead. So I can't help you. And of course, the unfortunate thing for that particular club was that they missed a generation. And they, in skipping, then they essentially had to start over again. And in many club communities, that's the circumstance that has happened, added to by the gap that was created by the recessionary period where everybody was kinda hunkered down and not wanting to go do something crazy. And that becomes even more important where, where you've got the women of this community pushing out to their friends, here are all the fun things that are going on. Because while it may not be their friend, it may be the child of a friend who's saying, who's forwarding us along saying, you should look at this for your folks, this would be perfect for them. So that the, the person who's thirty-something or forty-something, who maybe is not ready for this community, but they have friends or relatives who would be, and that becomes your, your opportunity. You know, I think your buyer segment of the next generation of people coming into this community is gonna be buying somewhere at an age between fifty-seven and sixty-two years of age. So you've gotta be getting to those people.
I think a couple of issues that we have as a community. Number one, probably ninety, ninety-five percent of the people that live here don't play golf. So we have that issue. Again, we're not the developer mindset here, so there's no profit for us to develop the community. Of that ninety-five percent, you have a mass majority of those people that say, why are you spending my assessment dollars on developing this community when there's no benefit to me? All you're gonna do is create overcrowding and whatever, all the other stuff you have to say. So I think that, to me, is one of our biggest challenges is to change the mindset, I guess, you know, of this community. And, you know, you're always talking from the side of we're developing golf course communities. We're a community with a golf course and I think is the biggest problem that we have right here.
And, and you're gonna need to change that. And, and that's why I asked this question about brand. What is, what is it that the people who would live here are looking for under, under the heading of brand? They're looking for friends, they're looking for fun, they're looking for fitness, they're looking for fresh air. Those are the things that, that the people who are, who would be here are wanting to find. So when you're describing your brand, you have to go to those words that start with the Fs. And the reference point that I always cite is, you look at all of the AARP studies, when they ask people, what are your greatest fears as you contemplate retirement? Number one is, I'm afraid I'm gonna become ill and be a burden to my friends and loved ones. Number two, I'm afraid I'm gonna, going to run out of money before I die. So I'm gonna be peneurious, I'm gonna be careful about how I spend my money. And the third, without fail, is, I'm afraid I'm gonna be alone and not have any friends. So if, if people are reckoning with those fears, then what you have here is a perfect blend of how you address those fears. You've got a major health facility right outside your front gate. You've got a very cost-effective, as you pointed out, cost of living. And, and by the same token, then you have a network that can create very robust interpersonal activity. Call it friendship if you want, but those are things that are really important. As you, as you think about how you describe the brand of the community, looks like I may have lost my power here, then, then that becomes a real important factor for you. There, there's one other bit of information I wanted to share with you as it relates to your brand. And that is, it's your brand and your descriptions of your brand that you're creating content, content to drive forward to tell prospective people about Sun and Lake. And there's some tremendous examples of that. Next time you, next time your wife has her iPad out, ask her to look up a thing called Humans of New York. There's a Wall Street guy in New York who is a pretty good photographer. Mark, you're a photographer?
A little bit.
Okay? He didn't like the Wall Street scene. He didn't like the whole, you know, cutthroat process of that. He migrated to his photographic interests. And, and in so doing, started making photos of people he would see on the streets. Get you to help me, I don't know where that is. And this Humans of New York is a photo blog. And he simply sees people and asks them if he can take their picture. And then he engages them in a conversation. What are you doing? What's going on with you? Thank you. And he coins the most interesting insights into the people of New York. Where this thing really took off and as the kids say, went viral, was he met a young boy out down on the Lower East Side. And I don't remember the little boy's name, but he said, what are you gonna do today? And he said, I'm going to school. Where do you go to school? Well, PS, whatever it is, you know? And he said, what's your favorite thing about school? Thank you very much. To which, to which the little boy says, oh, my principal, she's the best, she inspires So the guy's thinking, well, that's kind of interesting, I'd like to meet this principal. And he contacted the principal who told her story, which was, I hate my job. I would quit it, except if I did, I think they would close the school. And if they closed the school, the only other option for most of my kids is the streets. So I'm, I feel a little bit trapped and I, I hate that. And he asked her if you, if you had, if money were no problem, what would you be doing? And she's saying, I have wonderful kids. I have kids that should go to Harvard, I have kids that should go to Yale, I have extremely capable kids. They just are on the wrong side of town. And this thing went on his, this story just went on his Humans of New York and money just started pouring in. Of people who read about this, the little boy, the principal, and, you know, a lot of people saying, I should, I should, I can and I should help this lady. And that was the first evidence of how this Humans of New York reach worked. You go on there, there are many people who aren't very interesting. And then every once in a while, you run across one that's incredibly interesting. But if, if a community like yours is able to start doing the same thing and people can read stories about this person, I'm thinking of the client we have over on the east coast of Florida. And the club manager there tells the story about one of his most difficult members, you know, that, that member who's always coming to you griping about this is wrong, that's wrong, you know? And the gentleman, the member came to the manager and said, okay, never again, I've been a jerk, you're never gonna have a problem with me again. And the club manager, who by the way, is from New Jersey, so he said, you're kidding, right? And then said, what happened? And he said, I went to the fishing rodeo with my grandson. And when he caught his fish, he said, grandpa, this is the greatest day of my life, I can't wait till we get to do this again next year. And of course, in that moment, grandpa realizes fussing about, you know, how much fruit they got in their fruit salad, or fussing about the condition of the green, of the third green is not nearly as important as looking forward to quality time with my grandchildren. So those are the kinds of stories that you need to be telling so that other people like you, and, and let's face it, most of the people who will succeed you in this community are gonna come to you from the Midwest. They're gonna come from you, to you from Southern Ontario. They're gonna come to you as retired military. You know, this is a great destination for retired military. And what we've got, half million soldiers, sailors, airmen mustering out, this should be an option for them. So as you think about where are your opportunities, they're, they're gonna come out of that Midwest funnel in Southern Ontario, which by the way, over fifty percent of the rounds of golf played in the nation of Canada are played in Southern Ontario. The largest participation rates by population in the US are Ohio, Michigan, Wisconsin, Minnesota. If you look at and say, what's the concentration of golfers? About nine percent of Americans play golf. But you get into the upper tier of the Midwest and you've got participation rates in the high teens, double the national average. So that says, there are a lot of people like you up in places from which you came who would be prospective residents here. You've just gotta tell your stories well enough that people wanna tap into those. So to me, that's, as you're thinking about these questions as far as what your needs are, I think you need strategy. Because strategy will guide where you're going to go, what you're going to be. You, you need to be able to describe your brand in a way that people can relate to it. You don't have to have some fancy billboards of, I was saying to Jim, the first time I ever came down to Florida mindful of active adult communities, I was on my way up to a project that we had just bought in Ocala. And of course, driving up seventy-five on the way there, seemed like all I did was pass billboards for the villages. And I'm thinking, how will our company compete with this gorilla that's up there? And I noticed across every billboard, was sniped across one corner or another, the, the words, ask me about free golf. And I just had to chuckle, being a lifelong golfer, thinking, who in Florida is not interested in free golf? So their pipeline must be overloaded with people who come into the sales center saying, so what's the deal on the free golf? And, you know, to a certain extent, it's a marketing tactic and to a certain extent, there is free golf there. But the fact of the matter is, you are, you, here, you are so many things that the villages is not, and that's your competitive advantage. So as, as you think about where you're going to go in the future, you've gotta be able to very clearly and efficiently define your brand. And you've gotta be able to communicate that on a broad basis up into the Midwest and Southern Canada. And when you do, you'll have great opportunity. The greatest disadvantage you have right now is that you have no plan. So anybody with even a half-baked plan has a head start on you. So anybody with even a half-baked plan has a head start on you. From my point of view. You're seeing more and more evidence of people who are coming out of the Midwest and are turning back from Florida, and their turnback destination, someone mentioned earlier, is Tennessee. Same state tax profile, relatively decent weather, easy to get to. And the one great change that happened at the tail end of the baby boomer generation, you know, our parents or our predecessors wanted to retire out of the cold weather to the sunshine. So that's when Arizona boomed, Florida boomed, the desert of Southern California boomed. But the tail end of the baby boomer generation wanted to retire to grandchildren. You know, I don't necessarily want to be across the street, but I want to be close enough to my grandchildren that I'm there for First Communion, I'm there for piano recitals or dance concerts, so that my grandchildren know who I am and I'm a part of their lives. That becomes real important. So, for example, for a lot of the large home building companies, as they're developing their strategies, we've actually plotted for them, if you build in this location, like Charlotte, or Nashville, or Cincinnati, if you draw a map of all of the different cities, I'm sorry, all the different interstate highways that converge in those locations, that can take you in a five to six hour drive to millions and millions of houses, households, rather, that becomes a real attractive point of location for retirees. And so that's one of the advantages that Tennessee has right now over Florida. You're a little bit closer to the Midwest and Southern Canada. Want to move on? Jim asked me to prepare some thoughts for you as it relates to your stay-in-play program specifically. And I'm going to tell you, whomever it is that came up with this idea of stay-in-play is really right on the mark. That's the way you get people committed to your community. Let them come and experience it for themselves, let them live it. I was telling Jim before we sat down, that a part of the stay-in-play package that we would use so effectively, even to the point that within each unit on the stay-in-play package, there was a golf cart, so people could see what your lifestyle is. See how convenient it is just to hop in the cart and drive up to the clubhouse, or drive across the community to visit with friends, or get together. That becomes a real important thing. And to most people who aren't accustomed to having a golf cart as their second automobile, then they find that to be tremendous fun, it's very aspirational. If you're going to develop a stay-in-play program, the first is, of course, figuring out how you're going to capitalize it. How you're going to develop that. And that's either the district becoming an investor or a developer in those kinds of facilities, or groups or individuals deciding, we'll put up the money, we'll own it, and we'll lease it back to the district. That's another way that we have seen that work, and it works extremely well. Because you'll get tremendous occupancy. You know, most developers are willing to let people come in the stay-in-play package for free. That may not be the approach that you should be using, since you probably are not going to, or you're going to be needing to get some type of return on your investment, or you're going to have a partner who's putting up the capital for you. But if you think about the standards of best practice, they are easy to use, they're very transparent. You know, there's so much technology now around Airbnb and some of these, you know, what is it? Airbnb is the largest hotel company in the world, and they don't own a single hotel. So this is not a concept that you have to create for yourselves. You just have to tap in and use the technology, so that people can manage their reservations, manage their access, manage their planning themselves. You'll need someone to help you get that all loaded up, so it can become self-managed. The next characteristic that I put under best practice is you have to have a very aggressive welcoming and onboarding process. If you're going to bring people in so that they can stay in play, then they need to meet a lot of residents here. They need to see, who are the people who will be my neighbors? Who will be my friends? Who will be my golf partners? And Jim gave you the example that he heard me talk about. In the development business, and certainly in the golf business, we always have developed messaging that is oriented to men. You know, picture the great Pete Dye golf hole with the railroad ties, the water, the railroad ties, the huge mound with the pot bunker in the middle of it. And we guys look at that and say, oh, that's awesome, we got to play there. That looks like a great golf course, I'd love to try to hit that shot. The women in our lives look at that photo and say, oh my gosh, I'm not good enough to get across the water. And if I do, I can't get out of that sand trap. And hey, by the way, there aren't any people in this picture. So does that mean we're going to be all by ourselves down there? Are we not going to have any friends? Maybe it's too expensive. Maybe we should look somewhere else instead. All from one picture. So as you're thinking about it, you've got to create images that cause that female customer, the shopper, to look and say, this is perfect for us. It has the golf you want, I'm going to have a whole bunch of different people I can play bridge with one day, mahjong another day, and I can play these different sports that I've never played before. And by the way, the other thing that people need to see under the heading of best practice is they need to see a very robust lifelong learning program here. They need to see that if they'd like to learn how to play the tuba, that there's some way that the club can help arrange for a tuba teacher to come and conduct classes for that. Or learning how to speak German, or learning how to do this, that, or the other. People want to be engaged, and as we age, we want to keep our minds healthy. We want to keep them active. And that becomes a real important characteristic. So as you're onboarding your stay-in-play visitors, those are characteristics that they want to see.
That's one thing I brought up in the last board meeting. We have a college right next to us here. And they're really big into theater, music, and all those areas. And we have some people here taking art lessons over there. And I was saying, they're the type of people we need to tie in with, just in that aspect.
You know, the other resource that the college represents for you that is incredibly valuable in communities like this? A bunch of smart, young college kids that can show us how to use all these damn things. You know, I've got this message that keeps popping up, how do I make that go away? And, you know, we'll labor over it for a week, and they'll take a minute and a half and have it fixed for us. And so being able to have some, if you will, technology tutors, where anybody can come in, you know, at the Apple Store, they call it the genius bar, where you can just go and say, can you help me with this thing I can't figure out? If you have some college kids coming over, either from the fraternities and sororities earning service hours, or if they come over here and they get a round of golf out of it, or something like that, it's well worth it in terms of the value that they bring to your lifestyle. Some tactics to avoid if you're going to try to develop a stay-in-play program. And the first one is, don't go into this thinking you're going to make money. You're not hoteliers, you don't want to be. You're simply trying to create lead traffic. So you'd like to be able to run this stay-in-play program in a way that it pays its own bills. We refer to those kinds of programs, or the objective is that you're trying to create economic sustainability. You need to pay all the bills necessary to keep the units in first-class condition. Fund the future capital needs, like replacing the carpet, or be ready to spend a little bit of money on new furniture, or things like that, as the years go by. But the other thing that we see most often is, see to it that your stay-in-play units are commensurate with your residential around, so that someone can truly say, this is like a place that I might buy here. You don't want it to look like the Ritz-Carlton. You also don't want to have it look like the Motel 6. You know, you're trying to build a Marriott courtyard, you're trying to build a Hilton Garden Inn, you're trying to hit the middle of the market, so that people can say, this is really nice. This is just what we need. It's not lavish, it's not ridiculous, and at the same time, it's very well-kept, and this could be just right for us. Because that's the snapshot that you're leaving with people. I think we've talked enough about the capabilities, but the most important capability that you need to develop is the capability of outreach, of pushing your name and brand out. And you're going to do that, as I mentioned, photographically. I believe that one of the most powerful things that you do, and I think I commend you on your website, for me coming here today as a visitor, and being able to get a little personal snapshot of your own backgrounds, very important. So having the capability of creating that, you know, always in the past in private clubs, there would be the membership directory, you know, and it'd have John and Jane Smith, originally from Plymouth, Minnesota, you know, and tell a little background of them. Now all that's done digitally, so that everyone can get access to it. But what's happening is, as people are thinking about coming here, they are able to look and see, who are the people who are here now? Oh, these people are from South Bend, oh, these people are from North Side of Chicago, oh, these people are from just outside Cleveland, oh, these people are from Toronto. Pretty soon, people start saying, these are people like us. These are our people. And that's really important for you. Because that will, you know, there's still a heck of a lot of people who live in the Midwest, and you want to tap into them. And so I think that becomes important. By the same token, as I mentioned retired military earlier, you want to also be able to make yourselves a destination for that vast number of people who still need to draw on the services that are available through the military, you know, that are right over at Central Command, that are all over the state. You want to be able to make it easy for them to tap into that. Those are examples, to me, of the capabilities that you want, and the understandings. The most important thing that you're trying to communicate in terms of what you're pushing out about your stay-in-play package is, if you come here, you're going to meet a lot of other people like you. You know, this is not, this is not some hoity-toity, you know, someone said it earlier, $70,000 a year membership. This is for working people, this is for middle-class people. Because once the female who's doing that online shopping can look at that and say, this is perfect for us, we're going to fit in, she's going to do the same thing that she does on any other day, and she's going to develop a shopping list. And that shopping list is going to have golf on it, it's going to have some version of lifelong learning, it's going to have healthcare, it's going to have, you know, easy access to the grocery store, all of the things that make it easy for her to run her life and her household. Once you've answered those questions, you win. And it's not much more complicated than that. If you want to get really sophisticated, and, you know, if you will, the advanced course on this is you start to build in programs for grandchildren. Because again, if I'm in Florida in the wintertime, and there's a chance that my grandchildren are going to come and visit me, then it just doesn't get much better than that. And then you really have hit the jackpot. You know, what's that, that guy that got arrested, and they ask him why he robbed the bank? And he said, because that's where all the money is? All the money for you is attracting the people that you care for. Either they're your loved ones or your friends, and getting them to be here. And when you do that, you're going to have won the game. Questions for me about the stay-in-play? If I'm you, I'm thinking that the stay-in-play, the thing that's most daunting about the stay-in-play program is understanding how to capitalize it. But once you figure out how to pay for it, it becomes this self-perpetuating program. And the greatest pressure you will have then will be needing more of them. The very same people who will criticize you as you bring this idea forward, and say, let's just try it, let's just do three of them. Then when those three are full all the time, and their friends can't get in, the very same people who said they thought three was too many, are going to tell you what idiots you were, that you didn't build 13, or 20, or 40. Because we need more capacity, because everybody wants to come here. And I hope that that's your problem. I hope that your problem is, you have so many people wanting to get to visit here, that you don't have enough capacity for them.
I think in my mind, that's why I wanted you to come here. Because, again, I think we all are in favor of it, but it's, how do we do it? And I hope that's down here.
Well, some of that is, but how do you do it? And more importantly, what will be your source of capital? We're going to argue, we're going to suggest to you, that your source of capital is internal. If you just find that you're not able to cause that to happen, there are plenty of external sources of capital.
Okay, thank you.
There are lots of funds that are looking for these kinds of opportunities. And if they get to come into a community like this, and they have no competition, that's like stealing candy from babies.
Supervisors, that is the number one issue, is the capital. We have, you know, this stay-in-play concept has been talked about for years. If you remember, I believe in the, just a little history in the 80s, I believe Edgewater in Matanzas was the prime area for stay-in-play in the 80s. Now, you know, we look across the lake, and, very outdated, you know, but we still have many residents that live here in the wintertime.
Right.
You know, in addition, but like, you said it, it's capital. We have a section of land that has already been platted for this concept. And it's right here by, off of Edgewater Drive, in between, this is Deer Run, Hole 18, right here. And so the idea's been talked about for a long time, it's just how do we do that as a government?
Right. The other part of that is, my understanding is you have, still have a remaining inventory of lots that are developed, is that correct?
Yeah.
We don't have much of an inventory right now, but the county does. And the county will own approximately 1,500 lots here in the district, within about a year and a half. Right now, they own about 1,200. So the county is going to be a primary landholder here.
And most of these, most of these home building companies would crawl on their bellies to get...
Free and clear, I might add. There are no liens on these properties, these properties have been asscheded by the county. There are no taxes, there are no liens.
I don't want to overstate this, but I believe that there are a number of these large home building companies, and I'm not even talking about the Florida or the regional builders, that if you said, I've got 1,500 lots, they would be extremely interested. There's a scarcity of developable lots right now in the market.
We went to the county, Tanya and I met with them just about that. And they want to get rid of the lots.
Sure.
It's new to them, they're good, plus they own lots all over this county.
Sure.
And that was one of the things they were told if they were to do for us, the attorney's going to start working on them to get those lots that are here. We have one section over here that's, it's all there. The utilities are there, the roads are there, everything's there. And that's what I was, we talked about, is to get someone to come in here and give them to them. Some company, just come on in here.
Well, if you can get them from the county, my advice is, don't give them away.
Yeah.
You can sell them for below-market price, but that's better than zero.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that was for a developer, you know, to come in and market in that way. But that's what I'm saying, is give them to them, I mean, give them the reduced rate. We run into one little problem, I was going to, I'm glad we got to this point. We have real estate people here who are selling lots. We have people that own lots. They're getting, one just sold over on my street for $37,000, which is, people paid a lot more than that for it. And then we turn around, and we're trying to sell lots to good people, and give them rounds of golf free, and for a year, and so forth. So that's getting into the real estate people's back pocket now. And I didn't really think about that till one of the real estate people came to me and said, whoa, whoa, whoa. You know, and I said, well, we're an entity. We have to look out for ourselves first. So maybe you're going to need to jump on board.
Well, and your entity as a governmental entity has the responsibility to look after everyone's interests, as opposed to any one specific category.
Yeah, that's what I explained to them, was the fact that, you know, you're worried about you and your family, I'm worried about hundreds of families. worried about you and your family. I'm worried about hundreds of families.
Exactly right.
And that's where we're coming from. But there's a way that these real estate people can get on board and develop that too. So if they just think outside of the box a little bit, they realize what we're doing.
Well, it's only natural. We all think in terms of what's good for us. And at the same time, you know, you as servant leaders have a bigger picture you have to look at. And by the way, the visuals on this page, I chose because I wanted you to be alert to the fact that the people who are coming to look at Sun and Lake are looking for more than golf. Golf may be an important part of that, but they're looking for a robust lifestyle. And again, why is that? Because your customer is a female. She's not interested in only one thing for anything. And that includes dining. That includes socialization. We work with a, with a club just over in Sarasota, and they were trying to serve dinner seven nights a week. And they couldn't get people to come in for dinner for love or money. And they have a very capable, passionate, enthusiastic chef. So, you know, our advice was, "When you don't have any customers, you're not in business." So saying you're trying to be in business is a noble thing, but you're not in business. And the chef said, "Well, I would like to try a chef's table approach, where we'll have two couples, three couples. They'll come. I'll cook for them." And he's a very charming fellow. Before you knew it, the two couples went to four couples. The four couples went to eight couples. They finally had to shut it off at 10 couples, because the room wasn't any bigger. And it was the darnedest thing you ever saw. So at a place where they couldn't get anyone to come in for dinner, they were averaging $289 per cover. So it's kind of like, you're better off to run the chef's table than you are to be open for, for business. But it was all the wine they were selling and all of the other things that were happening. But the most important thing in it, you can picture it happening in a community like this, if the Smiths and the Jones invite the Browns and the Greens to come over for dinner, now the Browns and the Greens have to reciprocate and invite them to come over and participate in another one. So before you know it, that becomes a very popular program. Everyone likes to be able to socialize with their friends. I've heard so many people in so many club communities in Florida saying, "I can't wait until summer when we can go back up north and get some rest," because you all have such a robust and energetic lifestyle when you're here in the wintertime. And that, that's the way people want it to be. That's what people who are coming in for stay-and-play want. I sense that you have more questions for me about how to pay for this.
A lot more questions.
What is it you would like to know?
Well, if it's, in my mind, is, can you say this is workable? It sounds like you, you think we can work it.
Yes, I do.
And I, and I'd like to know more about, a little later on, about our lots that are available, and how we can do that, because I think we're all very, very interested in that.
I think there's, I think there's tremendous opportunity for the district. And I don't want to, I don't want to overcook this. There is risk built in this. So you have to be very deliberate in the approach that you use. But, but taking small steps first becomes really important. And being able to take small steps and build on those successes enables you, after taking one, and then two, and then three, then it enables you to start partnering with different home builders and developers and carving off different sections of lots, so that you have more activity going on in any one place than just one or two homes. And, but I, I've stopped using this example, but it's the one that always resonates with me. You know how they teach our, our marksmen in the military, and they, they will say to them, "Aim small and miss small." You know, you're not shooting at the guy, the bad guy. You're shooting at the button on his shirt. Then if you don't hit the button, you still hit something. And I had a marksman, a trained marksman in one of my sessions who came to me and said, "Actually, we're told, 'Don't miss.'" And I thought, "You know what? I stand corrected. You're, you're right about that." But the point that I make with taking small steps is, don't overexpose the district to risk. And at the same time, as you see your appetite for risk becoming broader or bigger, then, then you're ready to take the next step. Because if I'm your harshest critic, if I come to the next meeting and say, "I hear you had this yahoo who came in and told you, 'We should be doing these stay-and-play packages,' I think that's ridiculous. I think you as leaders need to be able to say, 'We're going to try it on one project, on one, and we'll see how it goes. And if we have the success that this yahoo thinks, then we'll maybe try two more.' But we're going to do it a little bit at a time, so that the worst case is, we have one unit that we've built, and it didn't pan out the way we thought it would."
Okay.
Where, where companies like I have worked with will take on 100 of these, or 40 of these at a time, that, that's not the right approach for a community like this, or for a governance structure of this type.
I want to ask, I don't know how far we're into the meeting, but do you guys want to take a quick break? Or does, we need to take a break for a minute and start again?
I'm fine.
Okay. Go ahead then.
Other questions?
Actually, I do have a question. When, when you set up these stay-and-plays, and I understand that the idea is, don't, don't go in for profit, just cover your costs, and exposure to outside people coming in and seeing the community as it is. And hopefully, somewhere down the road, they'll make a decision that maybe, "Hey, this is a great place. We'll come here." Because I think that's almost what happened with the stay-and-play that they talked about on Edgewater and Metansus. There was a real estate company here that managed that stay-and-play, and actually, it was a pretty good situation, because the people that owned those condos leased them back essentially to the real estate agency. The membership was paid for by the owner of that condo. And what happened, the good thing that happened is, people liked it so much, they started buying all the stay-and-play condos. And then, of course, the program was essentially disappeared, because it was just the sort of the availability. So if we were to set up a stay-and-play, however small or large, what, how do you differentiate, or how do you separate those individuals that are coming down, and let's say the younger people that are coming down for a golf vacation? We've had, I believe, some people that have been coming down here for eight or 10 years have actually gone to some of the stay-and-plays. And they said, you know, said, "Why do you keep coming down?" "Well, this was a great deal." So how do you, the question is, how do you not end up like some of the packages that are provided by the hotels to say, "Come in and have a golf package"? How do you separate that?
Two things. You get one stay-and-play visit.
Okay.
So you can't come down every year for the stay-and-play package.
Okay.
And now you have the technology available, so that you can monitor that. The other thing, and I think that was your question, is how do you manage abuse?
Yes.
The other thing, you gave the example of the hotels that have, I would certainly ally with every hotel within driving distance of here, and invite them to conduct a stay-and-play. And that, you'll be happy to work with them to make that easy for them, because that's another feeder market for you.
Absolutely.
Then, then the other, then the other characteristic, and back to Wally's example of, you've got some realtors in this area who are going to say, "You're, you know, you're getting in my rice bowl here. This is, this is what I do." My, my message to those realtors would be, "If you're concerned about your rice bowl, then you should build these stay-and-plays. And you should use that as the feeder to your real estate operation. So you bring them in. We'll help you push out the information, and you're going to have the first crack at all these customers, because they're staying in your place." So that's another way to capitalize that without having to use the money, money from the district. You know, the fact of the matter is, this capitalism thing really works. And if I'm a realtor in this area, and I say, "So wait a second. I can build three of these stay-and-plays and essentially run them through my real estate office?" And the answer is, "We'll have to work that out." But sure, we're receptive to partnering with you on this. Then all of a sudden, your greatest opponents become beneficiaries of an innovative program. Do you have VRBO now in the community?
We had nine. What our stay-and-play, just to dip our toe in the water, if you want to call it, was, we started out last, last summer, acquired a unit from a member for October and April, May, because it was a nice unit, and that was what was available. Then we found another unit basically for November through April. And we approximately had 10 people stay in it. Six were member referrals, and four were from VRBO.
Sure.
So we, I tried to heavily work the member referrals first, because our goal of turning them into members and homeowners, that seemed like a better market segment. But then, you know, that filled up the season, you know, the high-demand areas. And then, so like, now the last two people that are coming now are VRBO people.
Sure.
You know, because it's a weaker season, and it hadn't been filled up by the members.
Sure. And again, those are examples of how I would approach something like this. The fact of the matter is, if it goes the way that, that these stay-and-play programs typically are going to go in a community like this, once you feel that it's proven, you're going to have plenty of people who are going to want to be in this business with you, to the point that you'll have to manage the competitive profile of all of that. How do you get everyone to play nicely together? But--
That'd be a nice problem to have, though.
It's a high-class problem.
Yeah.
But keep in mind, you know, housing, housing is on the edge right now. Mortgage rates are still friendly. This is a great time to be a buyer. And the biggest problem that most markets are having is they don't have enough inventory, which means that property values are going to keep going upward.
Yeah.
Other questions about stay-and-play? Jim had alerted me that that was something that you especially wanted to, to think about. And so, that's why I had done a little bit of extra homework as far as these funds that are looking to put money into these programs. There are millions of dollars looking for these deals. And at the same time, I'll, I'll say to you, those are Wall Street dollars. Those are Hong Kong dollars. Those are British dollars. They're, they're indifferent to Sun and Lake. They're indifferent to Sebring, Florida. They're interested in opportunity.
How do we get that here, though? That's the thing. We're Highlands County. We don't have growth here. I mean, it's proven through the census that we typically, $100,000 is where we are. We don't have the growth. We don't have the stores that a lot of people look for here. How do we get a developer here to see this? You know, and that's been an issue for a long time.
Great question, Tanya. And the answer is, the county needs to be more assertive about how it goes about recruiting those kinds of developers. Developers are people. And they're going to respond to the counties that are enthusiastic, you know. You get up north around Ocala, very, very aggressive county profiles. You get closer over to Tampa, very aggressive county, county profiles. I know our land acquisition guys were always getting calls from community development officers in those counties. And Highland County may be a victim of its own, you know, current status.
Could be. I mean, these lots that we've, you know, told you about, these lots will remain in the name of Highlands County. The deed will not transfer to the district. If it does, the district would owe county taxes. So that's not the ideal situation.
Of course.
The county just adopted, at their board meeting on Tuesday, a plan to sell the lots within the county that have been discheated. And the biggest portion of that is Sun and Lake. So their, their policy, I was going to get that distributed to, to the supervisor, so they can read what the county just adopted as their policy to move forward to try to sell these lands.
And my approach, for me, my approach to that would be, I would call the people I know in the large builder category and say, "Hey, there's a county over here east of Tampa, around Sebring, where there is tremendous value in property acquisition. The county wants to get rid of them. You guys could swoop in and make a really terrific bargain, and that, that will attract someone." And if they can understand that, you know, what was it, the Confederate cavalry general who said, "Get their firstest with the mostest"? The developer who gets here first and gobbles up all these lots will own the inventory, and therefore will own the market.
My only question there is, and I'm sure that this will work now, that things are changing, but I was always afraid, and maybe just, it's just the way I am, but we have a developer come in and buy a bunch of them, and they, they end up being back to the cowling. And we're back, we still got another seven years to get them back where we want--
And that's, that's why you want to be able to do business with a developer who has some staying power.
Okay, so we, that's where we go. We're, we're directed to that.
And, and it may be that there are a lot of local developer, a lot of local home builders who have the creditworthiness to undertake a sizable project. But my experience is typically it's the regional and national builders that have the staying power to get through a downturn. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, Mike, your question is really important, because there's going to be a downturn. There always is. And so, you have to be sure that the ally that you have in this relationship is going to ride through that downturn with you.
And that's, that's what I meant. I mean, I, we, we have to be very careful to make sure that we don't end up seven years behind again.
Exactly right. The only thing you can count on for sure is the truth of the fact that the sun does not shine on the same dog's back every day. And you've got to be sure your developer partner is going to, can demonstrate to you that they're going to see this through.
One of the things that we lack also is, for a big developer to come in, we lack the personnel to, to do the work. We, this community doesn't have an excess of, of the labor force.
That's exactly right. And that was part of what I read into Tanya's comment, is, you know, if I'm a builder, I've got to figure out, where am I going to get my hands on the laborers who have actually hauled lumber, hammer, nail, all the things that have to be done, as well as the tradesmen, you know, for electrical, plumbing, things like that. And that will, that will limit pace. You know, I'm reminded of when our company went in to do a huge project in Anderson, Nevada. And our guys, you know, fat, dumb, and happy, went down to the county to draw permits. And they said, "Well, we need to get 80 permits." And the county said, "Well, why would you get the whole year's worth of them at one time?" And our guys are saying, "That's for this month. We're going to need at least 80 more next month." And, and the county, to their credit, said, "We don't even have enough inspectors to inspect 80 units a month." So there had to be a plan worked out between our company and the county, that we'll pay for those things. Certainly, the county can reimburse us, so there's not the insinuation that we bought favors, or that we own these inspectors. But to the contrary, we'll help front the money until the county can start to generate the proceeds that will come from this to pay for inspectors and all the other requirements that are needed. And that very well may be the case for Highland County.
We don't--
So--
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We don't have the people to build the houses here. We don't have the subcontractors. That's another, that's a big issue here.
That's hilarious. Talk about it, is the labor force.
We just don't have that here.
Yep, yep.
I mean, it takes eight months to build a house here, because you have so few subcontractors that, there were content jobs. And so, you have to wait a month for him to get that job done before he can come do the stucco. And then the painters got to wait another month before he can come back and paint it. And it just takes a long time. I think the other issue we have with these county lots is, there's 1,200 lots that are available, but they're amongst 3,000 lots. So for a builder to come in and say, "Okay, I'll take this section of 50 lots or 100 lots," well, there's individual homeowners within those lots that might not have a house or build a house to the developers' or builder's standards.
Right.
So now you have this intermix of issues. And to me, I think that makes the property less valuable to a developer, because they can't get a whole block, you know?
Right. A lot of developers are going to like the homog- A lot of developers are going to like the homogeneity of it. And the real key on that is going to be to say, this is no different than any other Midwest town. You may have a white house next to a blue house, next to a two-story, next to a flat ranch. And there will be differential on that. And everyone's got to get comfortable with the fact that this is not one of those communities where you go down the street building, you know, like I say, eighty homes a month and knocking them out and building another eighty the next month, because that's just not the way it's going to work here. And some builders will be turned off by that.
I would think your regional and national guys probably would be turned off by that.
Perhaps. Depends upon what else they have in their pipeline. Everyone wants to see growth in Florida. Florida's a good market.
Of course, should you get those things started like that, too, then you can get back to the community college over here that's part of that college that's at. And tell them, we need more electricians and we need more plumbers. Why don't you fall into that?
You bet. You bet. And where do I fall into that?
No, I'm saying that's where they can fall into this whole thing.
That's exactly right.
Get more students to offering that.
Exactly. Come to this school and you come out and you're going to have a good chance of getting a job.
Yeah.
And then the other part of that is recruiting people who are in other parts of the country where jobs are harder to come by.
Oh, yeah. And I agree about building things down there. I built, had an addition built, and it was tough to get through.
You bet.
It really was. And there wasn't anybody out there working real hard either.
Yeah. And I think one of the healthy parts of this discussion, though, is that what we've acknowledged is there's significant upside, and it is not simple. It's not a matter of saying, oh, what a great idea, stay in play, let's go do it. What, you know, our conversation has revealed is the fact that we all know that there will be hiccups, there will be adversities, there will be points of friction. And we'll have to, you know, if that's something that you, as a community, want to do, you'll have to work through that.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, for you who are servant leaders, you'll have the folks who are sitting in the cheap seats criticizing the concept overall and your efforts along the way. You know, the role of a servant leader is a thankless job, until everything turns out great, and then it will have been everybody else's idea.
Amen.
Yeah, we're used to that.
It's just piling on. Just one more item. I think most of us here can handle it.
Well, what it represents to the long-term vitality of your community is worth the effort in my books. And at the same time, I respect that you should be careful about this because you don't want to take on more than the district is ready to swallow. I have in this deck, the next bit is just to tell you a little bit about Global Golf Advisors, if you'd like for me to. Otherwise, you can just go on our website and it's all there for you to see.
You can share it with us.
Okay, well, I represent twenty-one people. Our home office is in Toronto. In fact, I didn't update this slide. We just, last week, opened an office in Sydney, Australia. So our home office is Toronto. I run our office in Phoenix. We also have an office in Dublin, Ireland, and now Sydney. So a little company that is trying to keep itself little while attending to opportunity. The company started in nineteen ninety-two as a specialty group at KPMG.
So they were part of KPM?
Yes. It was, in nineteen ninety-two, it was called a KPMG Golf Industry Practice, based in the Toronto office. For those of you who are golfers, you'll get a laugh out of this. The audit partner in Canada for major SEC accounts is a fellow named Stephen Johnston. And Stephen has made the third-most holes-in-one in the world. So as he would have the high net worth family, Canadian families like the Thompsons and the Westons, who would have land holdings, especially in the U.S., where they were building communities like this or resorts with golf, the word around within the KPMG network is, well, call our guy in Toronto, he's a golfer, he'll know what we should tell our clients. And that was the origination, as he kept getting more and more phone calls saying, I'm so damn busy answering all these golf questions, I can't get my audit work done. Then they concluded, we should start a specialty in golf-related consulting. So he made a critical decision in nineteen ninety-two, and that was, I'm not going to hire out-of-work club managers or golf pros. I'm going to hire people who are trained in professional services. So they are going to be CPAs, they're going to be financial analysts, they're going to be lawyers. We're going to attend to the business side of this segment. And that was how the company became what it is. And it was visionary on his part. We now serve over twenty-seven hundred clients around the world. And as you can see, we're getting to work on some interesting projects along the way. Some of these that I'm showing you are maybe places you've heard of, but the reason I chose them to tell you about, Cliffs Communities bankrupt when we went there. Nine golf courses, a brilliant concept, just got on the wrong side of the debt curve. And our job was to fix it. Our client was a senior secured debt holder in that project. It's now up, prospering, doing well. Desert Mountain Club in Scottsdale, similar history. Palmetto Bluffs just worked through the bankruptcy of Crescent Communities. And was just there a couple of weeks ago. And they're back on their feet with a new group of hedge fund investors from New York and doing quite well. You all know about the Benita Bay Group over in Naples. You've certainly heard all those stories. The Talisker Club out in Park City, a Toronto developer who went bust out there. Our client there was a court-appointed receiver. So we've seen projects that are not perfect. You know, it's easy to look at something like Pulte or Del Webb and say, well, yeah, you're eating off of a golden plate with a silver spoon. How can you go wrong? And of course, as all of you would know, having had business experience, nothing is ever so simple. But at the same time, we've had the chance to work on some very difficult and challenging projects as we've gone through this process. And I think that that's something that I should call out for you. So for you guys that are golfers, how many holes-in-one do you think are the, is the number? How many do you think he's made?
Fifty-some.
Good going. Fifty-one.
Wow.
Fifty-one holes-in-one.
Is that a putt-putt course?
You know, I'm going to say this the wrong way, but he's made fifty-one holes-in-one. You know, there are only two people who've ever made more than him, but he's not that great of a golfer. I mean, he's an eight or a ten handicap, but it's not like he's Calvin Pete where every shot's knocking the flag out of the hole. And furthermore, I've overheard, he's a mathematician in his soul. He's a mathematician, who ended up in accounting. And he has a mangled-up left arm from a hockey injury that wasn't properly set. So you know how they always teach you at a dress, your left arm's supposed to be straight? His left arm is kind of a chicken wing. And as a result, he hits a ball that goes out and kind of dies like a Texas Leaguer. And I've overheard people ask him, you know, how do you make all those holes-in-one? And his first response, like a mathematician, is to say, well, if I knew, I would make more. But then, as a, you know, like a golfer, he says, but I, you know, I hit this ball and it's got a lot of topspin on it. I think when I do hit a good one, it's rolling when it's around the hole as opposed to bouncing and spinning. And I think there's a little bit, I see the logic in that. So fifty-one holes-in-one, pretty good. There's background on me. It sounds like all of you have gotten the background. I put my bio in here just so you'd have a frame of reference if you haven't seen it. But I'm not going to belabor that. Read it if it's interesting to you. I used to work with a young man who wanted to have a golf bag with his name on it, you know, like the pros. And he said, would you help me get, you know, ask one of these suppliers to get me a bag with my name on it? And I said, you know, I'm glad to do so, but Mark, I want to be upfront with you. If you're a good player, everybody's going to know your name. And if you're not a good player, nobody gives a damn what the name is on your golf bag. And of course, he heard that and he said, well, fine, if you don't want to give me the bag, just say so. And I said, no, my point is, be a good golfer and the rest of it takes care of itself. So I work on the same thing with my own bio. If I perform well, everybody seems to know what they need to know. If you think about this stay in play, I think that the thing that I want to share with you from experience is that you've got to take it no different than you would any other business endeavor you're going to take on. You should build a business case. You should understand exactly what you're getting into. You should quantify your risk. You should understand how you're going to interact with the county. You should have already identified, before you get very far along, you should have already identified, who are these prospective builders? And not just the names of the companies, but have we met the individuals who represent those companies? Have they been here? Do they understand the county? Do they understand the lay of the land? Because we don't want them to come in here and get half-pregnant and suddenly decide they're not interested anymore, because your credibility is riding on those relationships. So it becomes real important that you can make your case in a very formal and businesslike manner. That means they're going to want to see written materials, they're going to want to see visuals, they're going to want to see the report from the county as it relates to the lots that are available. They're going to want to understand what they're getting into. And more importantly, they're going to want to see that you understand that. As you're trying to build a business case, I think that the things that are important are that you are able to quantify what you expect from this. Back to the example that I tossed out for Wale, as far as the realtors that want to do this, it is in your interest to help them to develop a good business model that if they decide they want to try to go into this with you or for you, that they understand what they're getting into. Because again, back to Mike's point, you don't want to have them come in, get the thing half-done, and now you've got a bunch of sticks in the air and it never get finished. So it becomes a very deliberate process. And candidly, given your roles in the district, my advice to you is you should have a third party doing that work for you, whose feet you can hold to the fire, so that they have to make deliverables, they have to provide you with materials. You know, you're volunteers. Hopefully, you're finding more time to play golf than you are sitting in these meetings listening to guys like me. So, you know, regardless of whether it's Global Golf Advisors or anybody else, you should be developing that capability and having the work done for you rather than doing it yourselves. We talked about VRBO. I wanted to be sure we touched on that. We also talked about the fact that if you're going to get into this, a part of building your business case is having the technological capability to administer it. Because the companies who want to come in and run these things for you become your de facto partner, and that's something you have to manage. I don't know that Billy Casper Golf is operating any of those kinds of stay-in-play programs, are they?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So, you know, and it may be that Billy Casper Golf wants to develop this capability as well, because I'm sure that there are other opportunities like this. If you look at where you're going to go to collect your information, these are examples of the things that we look for. And by the way, we look at two different source locations. If you think of Sebring and the place where people begin, whether that's Indiana, or Ohio, or Wisconsin, or Ontario, that's a line segment. We want to understand this local market, this county, and we want to understand it inside and out. But we also want to understand what we refer to as the source of origin market. So these, you know, someone mentioned that they're from up by South Bend. So, you know, if you're from South Bend, what's going on there? Are there other people like you up there? How do we get to them? Where are they in that neck of the woods? So that you're not firing, you know, you're not firing a shotgun blast at these markets. You're being very specific. You're being very targeted. And that's the right way to do it. Then the last piece of that puzzle, and I touched on it a couple of times, you need to know your military sources. If you're interested in recruiting retired military, how do you get them here? And I'll tell you, one of the things that I know that a number of you are veterans, and I can tell you, I'm always impressed with the network of communication within the military. I bet some of you have experienced that yourselves. We developed, for Pulte, we developed a community outside of Charleston, South Carolina. And of course, here you've got Army, Navy, Marine Corps, Air Force, all right there, concentrated within spitting distance of Charleston. And after doing our market research, we concluded that one of our primary market segments for that community was retired military. And it was amazing, once we got to the right duty officer, once we got to the right people who could tell us, okay, here's how it works. This is John Smith, this is Fred Jones, these are the guys that run our groups. Before you knew it, we were awash in people who were retired military who would say, hey, I hear about this place, it sounds pretty good, I want to check it out. And what was really interesting, one of the things we had to go back and rethink was the organization of residential product in the community. Because if I'm a retired petty officer or sergeant, I don't want to live on the same street with the brass. Put them over on the other side of the community, I don't want to live with them. They never wanted to live with me, why do I want to live with them? So it became real important. Of course, the other part of that is, everybody knows at what grade everybody else retired. So they pretty much know what your income is. Everybody knows who can afford what. And it's a very transparent community in that regard. But all of those things add up to, once you start to get a toehold with the retired military community, you'll see exponential growth because the word gets out. And it's impressive how effectively they are able to accomplish that. The last thing I want to emphasize that you should, is that last bullet on that slide, and that is, you need to know what drives the value if you're going to try something like this. What is it that people are looking for? I mentioned to you earlier about healthcare. People who want to tap into this stay-in-play program want to understand the economic profile of the community. They want you to explain to them, here's how things, here's how we pay for things, here's how we bankroll the club, here's how we're going to fund future capital needs. That means you need to have a capital plan for the club. We were talking about that when Mike and Jim and I were walking around this morning. Most people who are civilians don't understand that a golf club has this insatiable appetite for capital. You're never done spending money on it. And about the time you think you've spent all the money that could be spent, it's time to start over again. And so that's why it's important that you can have a good capital plan, and you can make that capital plan readily available to anyone who wants to consider living here. Because for the most part, people will not know even how to read it, but what they'll take comfort in is knowing that there is a plan and that you're executing it. And then, as I said earlier, the other thing that people want to see in Spain is they want to see the socialization platform. You know, a country club community, a facilitated lifestyle community like this is a platform for socialization. And that's something that everybody wants to see. There are a handful of questions I thought that you should be asking yourselves, and so I tried to formulate those for you. The first one is, how do you go about developing a long-range plan? And to me, that goes to the very thing we talked about at the outset, and that is, you've got to develop a strategic plan for this community. If I'm sitting with you on that side of the table, I'd say to you that a strategic plan is one of the most important deliverables this board should pursue. That sets the course for the future of the community. And lacking a strategic plan, you know, what was it, the saying about, when you don't know where you're going, one road is as good as the next? And I think that there's a certain truth to that. And I don't think it's fair to all of you and the time you put into this to say that you don't know where you're going. But I think you want to be very deliberate in establishing for everyone's understanding where you're going. So next question I suggest that you should be asking yourself is, when you start getting into this, what are the things that, are the factors? into this, what are the things that, are the factors that you need to really study before you start to deploy capital for a promotional program that you're considering like this? And again, we talked about this earlier on, and I think that club communities like yours have to have integrated a very intentional promotional program into, you know, I said it earlier, filling your pipeline. But you've got to be very intentional about how you get where you've got a lot of people who want to find property here to buy. You know, if I'm in your shoes, I want to have a lot of people who wish they could live here. That's good for business. You know, and you think about so many places you know of where nobody wants to live there because the community is dying, that's what you have to protect against. You can't allow the community to get to the point where it's aged in place and 50-somethings or 60-somethings aren't interested in being here. I think that's one of the great challenges. Remember that great line in, what was that movie, Caddyshock? When he looks around and he says, what is this, a dance of the living dead? You know, you want to be sure that people come into this community and say, this is good, this is fun. People seem to really be enjoying this. I could see me enjoying this. And that's when you're going to win the game.
You know, to that point, a couple of years ago, we spent about a quarter million dollars in updating our signs out on the road. And we got criticized pretty heavily on that, well, you know, just a coat of paint would be okay. But the point is, the signs looked like they were built in 1974, as they probably were, close to that. And it just updated the first impressions of coming into this community. And I think to your point is, driving by, it looked like the living dead, if you will. And now I think there's at least a hope that they might turn right and come in and just drive around if nothing else.
You're absolutely right. And, you know, the technology around signage, around construction, has changed so dramatically that, I'm not an expert home builder, but I'm always fascinated how I can drive through a community, and I can get within probably five years of telling you when something was built, just by looking at the technology, the materials, you know, the look of it all as it relates to what was going on. It's kind of like, you see those old photographs, you see guys walking around with a hat on. It's like, okay, well, that was 40s, 50s, somewhere in there, you know, before JFK showed up without a hat on. All those kinds of things become very discernible. And the worst thing that can happen to a community like this is to appear dated. Nobody wants to live, you know, in something that's outdated. I thought I might show you a process map that we use as far as, when we're developing strategy with clients, this is the approach that we use. We start with the market. You've got, in our view, you have to start with the consumer. What is it that people want? The people who are going to pay their money, what are they looking for? The next thing we look for is, what's the organization of management? Is it efficient? Is it on track? You know, one of the things we always run into in a community like this is, somebody somewhere is going to buttonhole one of you and say, Jim, he's a nice guy, but damn, I think he's overpaid. And this new superintendent we got, you know, he makes way too much money. Or whatever their pet peeve is. And so, we find that as an independent third party, one of the first things we have to do is establish that your management structure is either bloated or it's not. So that you take that off the table and you can get on with developing strategy. The next thing that we do is this operational evaluation, which is to say, are you overspending? Are you spending enough? And I'll tell you, in a lot of master plan communities like yours, the thing we find most often is that the club is not spending enough. It's not preserving the assets to the extent that it should. And as a result, the club finds itself in a predicament. Most of the time, club communities are unwilling to charge dues adequate to pay all the bills that need to be paid. And so, as a result, you know, it's kind of like, this democracy thing is great, except nobody wants to pass a vote that says it's going to cost them more money to live in it. So that always becomes a problem. That takes us for developing strategy to the financials. Obviously, with an office full of CPAs, we pay a lot of attention to the dollars and cents of anything we're doing. And certainly, that's the case with strategy. So, when we're starting to develop strategy with a client, we want to be sure that we have put under them a very solid financial foundation. We want to be sure that the strategy keeps circling back to the financial vitality of the project. And then finally, we end up developing a business plan that will be the actualization of, after we develop this strategy, how do we put it to work? Because having strategy is great, but the only thing that's better is putting it to work. So on the scale of, having no strategy is not very good. Having strategy is better. But having strategy that you're making work is the best. That's the intended objective. And so, that's the thing that I'm going to tell you that I think you need to really focus on, is this process and how you can develop it and implement it. For better and for worse, our approach is very process-driven. We're uncomfortable swinging for the fences. We'd rather hit 10 singles than one homerun. And so for us, we want to help you develop a process that's very deliberate. It's essential in a community of this type that everyone, your harshest critics, can see the process that you're following. And they can debate certain parts of it, but the important thing is for them to understand there is a process. That we're not just making this up each time we get together, we actually have a defined and deliberate process. And understanding some of your sunshine rules and limitations from those makes that all the more important, because it's also transparent for you. I think that that's something that you have to keep in mind. Let me see, the thing that I think that we put a lot of emphasis on is this capacity for projecting your capital capability and your financial requirements. Everyone in this community has in common an interest in the dollars and cents of the community. So they need to see that if you're going to bring forward a new plan or a new strategy, that it's rooted and based in sound financial planning. So I think I've pounded on that enough, I don't need to keep emphasizing it. Here are the things that are often missed when people are considering developing a game plan. The first is that they don't establish and define their standards of excellence. Back to your example with the signs, if your standard of excellence is, we're going to function with 1980s signage. Some of us might not agree with that, but at least that's the standard. And it's there for everyone to see. So that anyone who shows up and says, that looks like signage from the 1980s, the answer is, it absolutely is, and that's what we intended to be. Or the same is, we want excellent fairways. Then if that's the case, we're going to need to spend money on the fertilization, we're going to need to spend money on the cultural practices of aerification and verticating and all the things that really create great fairways. And everybody needs to know that. But we can't say we're going to have great fairways and then be trying to figure out how we can eliminate things. We have a client in Toronto, and their vision for the club, it's a golf club, and the vision is that this golf club will be the finest golf club in the nation of Canada. Great, you know, I'm doing all my homework, showed up at the meeting, best golf club in the nation. That's a fun project to work on. The first topic on the agenda was how do we cut our golf course maintenance budget? And, you know, as leaders, you know exactly the problem that they're wrestling with, but of course, you've got some smart aleck consultant shows up who says, wait a second, your vision says you're going to be the best golf course in the country. You're not going to get there by cutting costs.
Our vision and our capital needs do not agree to our revenue structure here, period. That's with the golf club, that's with our assessments, and it just doesn't. And now we're preparing a budget for our board, and we can't meet our equipment and capital needs based on our revenue structure. And so now that's where we are. And I knew we were coming to this, and you said it.
And, you know, the only-
You jumped on that quite well.
The only consolation I can offer you, Tanya, is you're not the only one in that boat. There are a lot of communities like yours who have the same burden. And that is because community leaders are under such pressure not to increase the costs of living in the community. You know, none of these guys are going to have anyone say, hey, nice going, you really did a great job of creating a budget. They're instead going to see the guy who's not going to talk to them at the next shotgun because they voted to increase the costs. And so, there's a lot of peer pressure. And frankly, I think that's the worst part of what you've undertaken, is the pressure to not get the revenues up where they need to be. Everybody knows, the math is easy. Getting to it is the hard part. I've touched enough on this issue of relying upon outdated or extant methods of marketing and promotion. When the developer leaves, most club communities like yours stop communicating with what's going on outside the gate, and as a result, they become invisible. And they, you know, so the incredible disappearing community. And then, one of the things that we see a lot with, of course, with people trained in risk management and business risk, what we see too often is communities that overlook contingent liabilities, where they didn't think about them or they dismissed them as not important. You know, and the best example I can think of in Florida, of course, is, we're cutting some corners on insurance, because, you know, we don't think we're going to have a problem until that hurricane comes blowing across the state. And then you find out that in trying to reduce premiums, you kept increasing the deductible to the point that you don't have enough money to cover the deductible. And then you're in a real predicament, because now you're all torn up and you don't have the means to get well again. And at that point, then all the people who've been criticizing you because you kept wanting to raise the revenue bar are saying, well, you guys are a bunch of idiots, why didn't you have enough money set aside for a rainy day? And you can't win, you can't, for losing. Then the last thing that I think is out there is really pursuing best practices under community governance. I think that's especially the case for you, as it relates to the limitations that the state of Florida imposes on you. And I think you need, you know, to be constantly pushing and understanding, what are our limitations? Where are there opportunities? Where has there been either case law or standard practice that allows you a little bit more flexibility in terms of being able to govern effectively? And I'll just leave it at that. But those are points that are often missed when we're working with communities like I don't know that this slide is even necessary, other than to tell you, from a standpoint of GGA's value system, these are the things that we think are really important. These are the things that we think you should expect of us, that you should hold us to. And it certainly shows you things that we expect of you. So if we're working with you, these are the things that we expect. If somebody else comes in, you all should be preparing yourselves to be able to deliver those same capabilities for anyone, not just our firm. And I don't, you know, you're Midwesterners, you know right from wrong, you know good from bad, you don't need me to coach you on that. Mark, I know I keep lumping you in with the Midwest there, but I know you're a Boston guy. I know you're Red Sox guys. Questions or comments?
My question would be, having heard you speak, I knew what you knew, but when I initially contacted you, it was all around the stay-in-play and, you know, the financial viability of that. And obviously, with your presentation, you and your company do more. How do you see your company helping us, or what is your vision for how you can aid us in our, you know, quest to be a better club and a better community?
When you asked me, Jim, about the stay-in-play, you know, I think I might have even said to you, boy, this is really in my sweet spot. I do this and I'm pretty darn good at it. But the more I did my homework and the more I came to understand Sun and Lake, I think I came away with the idea that if you're only undertaking the stay-in-play, you're, it's like you're wanting to put new grips on your clubs, but you're not really willing to improve your golf game. You know, and so, to me, you as a group need to be undertaking a more comprehensive approach rather than isolating it only to one small part of it. That one small part is important, and I don't mean to diminish its importance. But I think having a stay-in-play plan and making the commitment to deploy capital and really put in the effort to develop that, in the absence of a plan, is going to be a disservice to everybody involved. And I say that because if I were not on your side of the table, and you said, hey, we've put together this really cool stay-in-play program, can you help us meet some of these home builders that you talked about? I can say, okay, well, the first question they're going to ask you is, okay, sounds interesting, show me your game plan. Oh, well, we don't exactly have one of those, but we'd really like the stay-in-play idea. I'm going to say, I'm not sure I'm willing to invest with you. I think maybe if you've heard me talk, many of you may not know, I used to play golf for a living, and was a pretty good golfer at one point in my life. And I often say that the most difficult business decision I ever made in my own life was deciding that my golf game was not a good long-term investment. Because it wasn't what I wanted to decide. And so, I put in the same category, the hard decision is deciding to have a comprehensive plan. Because a part of your comprehensive plan is going to be, how do we expand our market reach and fill a pipeline that ensures that all of us in this community today will see a more robust and economically successful community in the future? And I think that's your challenge. To cherry pick parts of it is all well and good, and it's better than doing nothing. But I think that it leaves on the table a lot of unanswered questions, and I'm afraid that if I were to try to help you with the stay-in-play, so many people would ask you questions that you couldn't answer.
So your suggestion would be to start out with GGA helping us develop a strategic plan?
It doesn't have to be GGA, but it should be an independent third party who's going to do the hard work and the heavy lifting that your rules do not allow these men to do. And furthermore, I'd say, if you don't want to take that approach, then you're better off, back to Wally's example with the Realtors who want to protect their own interests, then charge them with sourcing the funds to help you build these stay-in-play units, because that also is a benefit to them. There's a return to them, in some ways, that is even greater than the return to the club. And then create some sort of a venture, partnership, whatever you want to call it, so that you can help them get things done while they're benefiting from that program.
So the action steps then, so if we had the strategic plan in place now, what would be the next action step you'd be advocating?
If you had a strategic plan now, and you're implementing that strategic plan, then I would say that the next step would be that the stay-in-play would be one of the things I would be implementing. But I would also be, one of your strategic pillars should be expanding the reach of Sun and Lake Golf Club. So that means you're blanketing the Midwest and Southern Canada with information, images, stories, things that cause people to say, we've got to check this out. I've got this on my checklist of places we want to hit when we go to Florida next winter. And you should, by November, you should start seeing significant increases in your traffic count and in your lead volume.
So, create the plan that covers the five F's, and then when you're covering the five F's in place, then execute the next part of the plan?
Exactly right. Yep. Be sure that you can be what you say you are, and then be busy saying what you are.
Okay, let me ask you a question. I know that the-
I know that the strategic plan has to be individualized, there's no doubt about it to this club. But do you know of any out there that would, that we, area that we would fit in, that we could have, not a cookie cutter, but someone else's plan to go by to start with? I know when we were putting together pandemic plans, let's say for the country.
Yep.
We pulled in other people's pandemic plans.
Yep.
Yeah. Anybody out there that would have an outline or something for us to look at and get started with?
I'll give you, I'll give you a strategic planning template that we give to our clients, happy to do so.
I'd love to have that.
And at the same time, the thing that always makes me nervous with what you're describing is what you already know, and that is, you know, what we see as plans where they were cobbled together from other people's plans and they're not cohesive.
They're not individualized.
I mean, you'll know how to individualize it.
Right.
And that may be another approach for you.
Yeah.
But the part of that that I struggle with in terms of trying to imagine how the five of you and these people at this table would approach that is, if you can't talk except on the public record, how do you get any work done?
Yeah.
You know, so I guess you've got to call meetings like this and make them essentially work sessions where you're doing the heavy lifting of developing strategy.
Yeah. One of the things that we do at this board that I haven't seen before is if someone has an idea, the president usually points that person, so take that and run with it, bring it back to the board.
That's the punishment for having ideas.
Right. And then once you do that, we do have, we've, at the end of each board meeting where we go into general discussion with the board members between each other, and that's when we find out what each other's been doing, you know? And horribly slows down the process very much. But with a strategic plan to go by, we might be, and I'm just suggesting this to the board, that Tanya and Omar and a person from the board and David get together as a committee and start, at least get it started. And present to the board at each of the meetings or special meetings or workshops.
Sure. Well, I'd be happy to, I'll do two things that just pop into my mind. Couple of years ago, we developed a strategic planning template, and I'll send that to Jim. But we've had so many clients who have said, look, we hear all these great things about you guys, can't you just show us a strategic plan you've done? And of course, the catch is, well, that one's from Medina Country Club in Chicago. Well, that one's for Palmetto Bluff in Hilton Head. And those are proprietary interests where it's not public information. And so as a result, we are not going to send you the Medina strategy or the Palmetto Bluff. But what we did was develop, we took and cobbled together internal to our own shop several plans, redacted names, I think we changed the name to Redstone Golf Club or something like that, so that at least people could see, what's it supposed to look like? Because as you know, a lot of people can't even imagine what a strategic plan's supposed to look like. Our approach is, there are several hundred pages of work that go behind the strategic plan, but the strategic plan itself is 20, 25 pages.
Right.
You know, and that always makes people crazy, especially when they see our fees, because they say, we paid you guys all this money, we got a 25-page report. No, you got several hundred pages of research that's invaluable to you. And then, you know, there's another thought that just popped into my mind, and I'm not, even in our own storage system, I'll have to find it. A couple of years ago, no, last year, we completed a strategic planning initiative for the city of Los Angeles, which owns 14 golf courses in LA. And of course, all of that information is public information. And so I would be at liberty to share that with you so that you could see what it is and what it is and from your perspective, what it is not.
Yeah.
So you could evaluate that for yourself. But that is public information that would at least give you some sense of, so what should we have? What should we do? So those are three different sources I think I can get for you.
Right.
You can send those to me as well, and then I can pass it on to the board.
Okay? My pleasure.
One of the, my obvious view of that is that I'd like to see that to go by and look at, to make up one decision or the other. Number one, yeah, I think we can pull this together. Two, we can't do this, we got to hire professionals to come in and do it. But I need that next step to see what's available.
Of course.
And I have this feeling that we might be able to put one together, but like you say, is that the one we could put together? And when we go to a developer and say, he asks for our plan, we give it to him, he's thinking, I'll put this together. It looks good, but it's substance free, you know? So that's what I worry about. That's why I'd like to see something to go with.
Well, and that's one of the things, I want to say this the right way. When I used to see plans that people would give me where they had approached, pull to, hey, we want you guys to partner with us on this deal, and of course, I'm saying, well, why don't you show me what your plan is? And what I would get from them, when it was amateurish, instead of that being a plus for them, it was a minus. You know, in some ways, if they'd said, you know, we really don't have a plan other than to talk to you guys, then I would say, okay, well, then we'll help you get a plan. But when they gave me something that looked kind of like a horse with a zebra stripes and a giraffe neck, you know, you say, I don't know if these guys know what the heck they're trying to do. And we sure don't want to put a dog in that fight with them. So that would sometimes work to their disadvantage. But you take a look at the things that I'll pass along, I know that on the airplane today, I can get access to the first two documents, the template and the sample report, and then I'm going to have to do some digging in our archives to get the city of LA information.
Okay.
Glad to share it.
Appreciate that.
For me, philosophically, you know, our company, there are two of us that own the company, Steve Johnston and me. It is absolutely unabashedly a for-profit enterprise. And at the same time, I don't believe that anybody owns knowledge. I mean, I understand that one can own intellectual property.
Right.
But I think we're supposed to help one another. And I want the ethic of our company to be, those guys are good guys, they try to help everybody do better. If that's our epitaph, then I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
And if you, we get to the point where we need to discuss working with you on this because we're not getting anywhere. I think besides just come to a board meeting or something like that, we could work through Tanya to get with you to find out, well, what's it going to take? Why do we have to set aside to put you all in mind?
And again, back to what I was describing before, as far as my recommendation to you, our process is very systematic. You know, we're not wed to, we have to do it our way, but we do know that there are certain pieces of the puzzle that have to be there in order for the puzzle to look the right at the end. And so for us, it's like, we'll take it in whatever order makes sense, but at the end of the day, the puzzle's got to fit together in the proper way.
Right, right. Well, maybe we can find some of those pieces before we hire you.
Yeah, Henry, that's what my question was. See, I thought, well, it's going a whole different direction when I'm thinking, because I'm thinking, we're going to have you do this for us, for what we need. I don't mind looking at one. Of course, with my background and knowledge, I would know, I would have to, I would have to take your opinion and, or whatever opinion we do, but my process from the whole thing was that we would, we would hire you to do the strategic plan, but I don't mind looking at one and to decide whether we want to do it. But was that, was my thinking wrong there?
No, it wasn't wrong. You're probably a step or two ahead of where Wally and I are.
Okay.
Because I believe, having read a little bit about Wally's background, I believe there's a tremendous amount of intellectual curiosity in his question.
Yeah.
Which is kind of like, I just like to see what these things look like.
Yeah.
You know, kind of like, I don't want to fix your car, but I kind of enjoy looking under the hood.
Okay, well, just so I know what.
But I can tell you from my, from my own experience, I'm convinced that a lot of the time that we are engaged to execute strategic planning for folks is once we've been willing to open up and show them what it is, that most people look at it and say, good God almighty, I'm retired and I'm not even getting paid to do this. So why in the world would I want to do that? But again, everybody's got to find that level for their own comfort.
Yeah, and I just didn't want to be completely confused of what was going on with all these questions to you, confused.
Mike, you're not any more confused than I am.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Tanya, or anybody here have comments?
I got a comment to make, I guess. And I wasn't prepared to do this. So, Tanya, hang on, here we go. I'd like to get your, yeah, your input to his comment as well. I'm kind of the guy that likes to think what if and what out of the box and to the irritation of some people, but, you know, I've heard no before, so that's not a big deal. But anyway, back in January, I had this idea that what could we do with this community? Make it better and more appealing to people coming in and bringing in people that would be of a same mindset, you know, in other words, having the same objectives, enjoy golf, enjoy recreational activities. And so over the last few months, and because of the sunshine law, I can't discuss it with these guys, so now's a perfect time to bring it to the forefront. And over the last few months, I've had conversations with bankers, I've had conversations with realtors, builders, the commissioner from the county, in terms of this idea of maybe trying to create a bundled or all-inclusive community. In other words, all of our activities and all of our, everything is all included in your assessments. And I've gotten some positive feedback from that. I've gotten one negative comment, and that was from our lawyer, saying that this is selective discrimination.
They always think you're supposed to follow the rules.
Exactly. But my point was, is that through my thinking was that this program that I kind of developed would create a huge marketing plus for us. We'd be the only community in central Florida that would offer this type of program. And I know there's like 28 or 30 Elmen Naples alone. And it would set us apart from everybody else, and it would bring in the people we want to bring in. Again, my concern here is that most of the people that live here don't play golf and they don't, it's just a place to live because they work someplace here, which is another negative, because we don't have factories to keep bringing in that next generation of people. And so I guess I would like to get your feeling, you know, I certainly go into more detail, but I just want to get the idea out that even though the lawyers say we can't do it by my structure, doesn't mean that there isn't a structure that we could do it. But I guess what I'm asking you is, what the idea of a bundled community is good, bad, or indifferent, or whatever?
There are a number of lessons learned from the recession, and one of them, one of the significant ones that the developer community has taken from the recessionary cycle was that bundled communities are more favorable in stormy weather than unbundled. So the next generation of communities like yours will be bundled. And that was because during the worst of the recessionary cycle, the bundled communities, while they still were damaged, they lost about half of the property value that the unbundled lost, and they recovered more quickly. And the reason was because of the multiplier effect. If there are 3,000 people who are all paying, pick a number, $100 a month, that's a lot better than 200 paying $400 a month. And so having everybody in the boat with an oar in their hand moves it forward. And so that's going to be one of the big changes. By the way, the other big change that doesn't apply to your community was, you know, a lot of country clubs want to sell what they refer to as a refundable membership. And refundable memberships are the things that got Bunny to Babe Company in trouble. You know, refundable memberships are a great idea in a good market, but when you've got more people trying to get out than you've got trying to get in, it's not very refundable. And in the harsh light of the depths of the recession, when you say to someone, okay, now let me be sure I got this right. I give you money and you promise to refund a large proportion of that to me, which will be provided by somebody that neither one of us has ever met or heard of before, who's going to show up perhaps at some future date and buy the equivalent of my membership. Sounds like a Ponzi scheme to me. And that was the way the state attorney of Florida saw it. And that's why they undertook that case with Bunny to Babe Group. All of that now is on the record, everybody can read and determine for themselves. Your attorney is giving you really good advice, and I don't know him or her, but I, you know, respect that their responsibility is to say, let's just, let's just be careful here. And at the same time, what I can tell you is that a lot of club communities are trying to figure out how to go back and protect the rights of the people who made their bargain on an unbundled basis, and how to change the community going forward so that future residents will be in a bundled relationship.
Well, that was kind of the premise because obviously everybody that's here today is grandfathered in, you can't change the terms of their deal. But my thinking was, is as we go forward, the properties that are sold within the community would fall under the new program versus the old program. And I guess that's where he got a little nervous, is because now you've got this guy paying, you say, $100 a month for assessments, and then the new guy coming in is going to pay $400 a month for assessments, so all of a sudden you've got a little catfight going on back and forth, and pretty soon you're in court with protecting the lawsuit, so.
But it is not, it is not easy at all. And the people who are, the people who are the shock absorbers in the projects like that where I, that I have seen, that are at a whatever phase of the transition, the shock absorbers are Tanya and Jim.
Well, that's good, it's not me.
Because it's only natural that if I'm paying 400 and you're paying 100, I don't think that's quite fair. And it's by the same token, flip it around the other way, if I made a deal that said I paid 100 plus whatever modest increases come along, that was the deal I made. You can't change the deal on me now that it's inconvenient to you. So that is a point of problem, and it requires a lot of very careful planning.
Well, the long term of this whole thing I was looking at was the marketability of it, being able to say, you know, you pay me this fee, which would be probably half of what you'd pay in on the coast, and you get all this. And we, and our product is good. Our product, right now in this community or this area, central Florida is the best you can get. Is it Naples standard? Maybe not, but in terms of this area, it's great. And to me, it fits the blue collar, if you want to call them that, customer.
And one of the, there are two things that your comments made me think of. And first of all, I'm very bullish on central Florida. I think that central Florida's best days are still ahead of it. And maybe that's because, and this is a good, this county is a good example of that, where they've been a little slow on some of these things, but that means that there's plenty of upside now. Where, you know, you get over on the coasts and they pretty much tried all the tricks at this point. And so I think that that is important. When we do a market analysis, one of the things that is a part of that is what we call a push-pull analysis. What are things that push people
Right.
to Sebring? And what are things that pull people to Sebring? The things that push people to Sebring are the traffic problems, the congestion, you know, all of the stuff that you know better than I. And I enumerated some of the things that are factors that will pull people to Sebring, but I'm very optimistic about the central Florida market. The other thing I was going to share with you, and I, since I don't know your attorney, I'm just going to blurt it out. One of the leading authorities on these kinds of conversions like you're asking about is an attorney over in Boca by the name of Michelle Tanzer, and she is brilliant.
To that comment, I actually said to Tanya, I said, well, if our attorney doesn't give me the right answer, let's go find another one. So thanks for the name.
Well, and I don't, I don't mean to.
I know, I'm just kidding with that.
Add to that. But, you know, I wouldn't be a very faithful professional if I didn't say, hey, there is a really capable, no different than if you had some terminal illness and I knew that there was somebody who could cure that and didn't say so.
Anything else, guys? Tanya, everybody?
I just need to absorb it now.
Yeah.
I got a couple of questions.
I'm afraid, I'm afraid I've been giving you a drink out of a fire hose, so I apologize for that.
No, that's fine.
Just so I'm clear, you're going to get Wally or Tanya, not Wally, some information that we'll be able to absorb and talk about, and then you'll get back with us, is that?
I'll leave the ball in your court. I don't want, you know, I'm here because, because as a professional courtesy to Jim, he asked me he asked me to be here. And at the same time, I'm, I'm not here to make a sales pitch or anything like that. If I can help, I'm happy to try.
Kurt, or anybody have anything else?
I got a couple of questions, but not for Henry, just for us in general, because it is a public meeting, but.
Well, I, I just want to, before you get, thank you for coming. And I really enjoyed your presentation, and I have, I have learned a lot, that I had no idea what was going on, so I just want to thank you for doing this, and hopefully we can work something out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've enjoyed being here.
Thank you.
Okay, Kurt.
Tanya sent out this tee restructuring program here, this list of tees, and I guess I was a little surprised that, I thought some of the gold tees were going to get moved around, and I don't see anything on here about gold. In other words, creating more separation between the red tees and the gold tees. I was just wondering if this was Ron Garl's recommendation, or if we have homogenized his recommendation to fit our own.
I'll let Jim answer that.
So.
No, that's an excellent question. I think when you look, and it's good that Henry's here, because I think he'll speak to this. When, when you look to the golf course architectures, and we're not building many courses now, so really, when you look at golf course building, it really happened a lot in the 90s. You know, that's when National Golf Foundation told me, told us all we needed to build X courses a day, which appears to have created an oversupply. But even at that time, there were a few architects, like Pete Dye, that just showed up and said, "Write me a check and leave me alone, and I'll give you something that's beautiful, and you'll even be able to finish half the holes." But now, when we, so when this project started, we started out with, what happened is, a number of years ago, you guys could tell me how many, we moved the gold tees drastically forward, and probably in six cases, we put them on the red tee spots. And we, so we took a golf course that was designed for play, starting from the tee to be evenly distributed, and from the demographic changes, we took and put half of our play on 15% of the tees. So when I got here, we were having trouble maintaining those tees, and I said, "They need to get bigger." And so from those tees getting bigger in that exact area, it became a tee project of, how are we going to move the tees for different reasons? So, and one of the problems when you took those gold tees and put them well forward, was predominantly on those six holes, there was now an inconsistency between the white tees and the gold tees. So there's a big gap, and so generally, you'll have an incremental, you know, the, the blue tees, if you have, you know, like on our course we're talking about, there's a black tee 30 yards head, there's a blue tee 30 yards ahead, there's a white tee 30 yards ahead, there's a gold tee 30 yards ahead, there's a red tee. Well, now all of a sudden, the gold tee was 60 yards ahead, especially on those six holes. And so when we enlisted Ron Garl initially, after we got away from the idea of just making right where the red and gold tees were bigger, the, the thought for Ron was, we want to have this fixed, and the way we're going to fix it is we're going to move the white tees up. You know, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to shorten the white tees. And then there was an outcry from our white tee players that said, "We don't want it to be shorter, we, we like, we like the distance that it is." And so, that happened before Ron put things actually on paper. So his first effort on paper was, we want to fix this problem between the, the white and gold tees, so when it hits the paper, it moves some of the gold tees back. And then when he comes back to the committee with that, you know, the committee's response was, "Well, we have a lot of people that are up there on the gold tees that need that distance." You know, so you moved it back, and half of the people that are playing the gold tees can handle the gold tees getting further, but the other half can't. And the business of golf now isn't to make the game harder or longer, you know, it's to make it more playable. So from that committee, which is only a representat, I mean, there's eight people on the committee, and we have 300 members, so whatever, what is that, the 2% or 3%, you know, that hasn't really been elected but been appointed, you know, work through that issue. And so now, we're literally, we have one hole where we didn't even recommend anything because we, you know, couldn't come to an agreement. But we do have a, we have a tee project out there, you know, based on what the architect was told. It's not his opinion of this is where the tees should be. He's more located the tees from feedback, but it's been hard to get feedback. We did send out a, you know, questionnaire to all the membership to start the process that he saw, but there wasn't, you know, there wasn't a consistent direction from the questionnaire. But we could go through hole by hole, you know, tee by tee to kind of look at it.
I just wanted to make, make sure that the committee, which I don't consider professional, wasn't taking a professional's recommendation and changing it to their own liking. The other issue I have, and I play the white tees, but you've got guys on the gold tees that are par fours, they're hitting within 100 yards of the green. I mean, to me, that's, that diminishes the quality of play, too.
And that, and that is a real problem, Kurt, but the problem is, there's about 10 of those guys doing that, and we've got to focus on them 10, but we got 60, 70% of our golf club plays from the gold.
I don't have an issue with that. My, listen, you're, you're not listening what I'm trying to say, is, I'm just, no, you're not. What I'm trying to ask is, did the golf committee change the recommendations of Ron Garl? And you're saying he didn't, and that's really all I'm asking.
Okay.
That's it. I mean, you're right, the 10 people that are using the gold tees unfairly, if you will, I'm not criticizing anybody, I'm just asking the question if that's what happened. And apparently, it didn't, so I'm fine with it, I just.
I have a question for you. I think the bid, we've already advertised for bids for it?
Yes, we've advertised for bid.
And I talked to Bob Butts last night, for a considerable length of time. And one of the questions he asked me is, he says, "Do you know where the tees are going?" Because I don't. And I said, "Bob, I don't have a cotton-picking clue."
Well, you got an email on it.
I got an email, yes. And it's, and it shows a little of it, that I would have really liked to have seen a lot more of it before we put the thing out for bids.
Well, you're going to, I don't know if this is too late, Larry, but we, we put on the agenda for next Friday, from today, to, to once again, take a, you know, to go out, and we're going to show the supervisors exactly where the six tees are and, and have that explained. Now, the two that they've made the temporary changes will probably, they, they won't be affected by this because they're not in, unless we want to make a big deal about it, but those, those things were set out there as a two-week, you know, just, just to try it. But I, I don't see that as becoming anything that's going to be done this year on, on that thing, so. But it could be, I guess, if, if the majority of us want to do that. But again, where they put that gold tee is very happy, it has satisfied two people, the white tee players, and the people from the gold tees who hit the ball long way. That's who's going to help, if we put that tee back where it's temporarily at now. And once again, the guys who don't hit it very far are the ones that's going to be punished. So it, it's just stuff that we've got to look at and make a decision as a group. But I played yesterday with somebody that, one of those guys that hits the ball long way, he loved that new tee. Because he could take that driver up over that quarter. And now, where we have it, he has to, he has to play an iron or something, and I said to him, "Well, you shouldn't be hitting from the golds as long as you hit it." There's plays on 17 and number six on there, or number five on there, if they don't hit a driver, you know, they probably should not be playing the gold tees. But that again, is something that I don't know we have to get into, but there's, there are a half a dozen, or no, a dozen or so guys playing the gold tees that shouldn't. As simple as that.
So just some clarification, so 16 and 17 are not part of the RFP, you know, that went out. I'm sure there's some miscommunication with, with Bob, or I don't, maybe Bob, you know, missed something. The start of the tee project, you know, the board did send the tee project to the golf committee to conceptualize, and the golf committee has been involved every step of the way. The, the pictures of the drawings of the tees that are on the website are drawings that were presented with Ron Garl to the golf committee and gone over. So somehow Bob misunderstood the question, or, or just had a, you know, had a lapse to not.
Maybe I misunderstood Bob.
Yeah, I mean, he's been intricately involved with every tee to know, you know, literally within a few, a few feet, where every tee's going to be located. So, yeah, there was some communication breakdown there.
Okay, well, if we could just have those drawings and each of us get your golf card on Friday, that's good.
Yep. Can we do it together? Yeah, we, we can, we can do it together, because.
It'll be on the agenda, yes, we can do it together.
I put it on the agenda, and we're going to drive separate carts, and the meeting would just be, what do we call it?
Recession.
Recession, and, and we'll go out and then come back, because our meeting next Friday, guys, is going to be quite long, so.
Okay.
But there we can look at it.
Second question is, previous meeting, the discussion of the PGA came up, and the way I left the meeting, and there was three of us here asking for more information on the issue, I know it was kind of voted down in July, but the fact that he brought that back to the board, because the PGA has offered us more money, we were asking, "Okay, does it make financial sense to do this?" So I'm just wondering where we're at on that whole project.
Meeting with, Tanya sent me a format yesterday, I really haven't put the exact format together that you'd want. I can give you, before you leave today, an Excel sheet that will give you a lot of basic information, and then you can all give me the sheet back with feedback as to what.
That's fine.
What you'd like to add to it for next Friday.
I was curious where you were in the process, and that's all, so.
It was going to be in the board packets that you get today. So we were going to have a resolution for the PGA.
Yeah, there, there will be a vote, or at least it will be brought up for vote next Friday.
President Gilpin has requested a resolution, and then the backup documentation we were going to have behind it, Kurt. It's not complete yet.
That's okay.
So we're, but we're going to have it today.
I'm just asking where we're at, that's all.
You'll have it today.
Okay. Anything else from anybody?
No.
Great. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.